Mayor Pierre live on YouTube.
Hello.
Thank you.
Yes.
Everyone, today is Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020.
Okay, man.
Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020, and it's approximately 6:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and acknowledge that both the press and the public were duly notified of this meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. As everyone knows by now, all of our meetings are being held virtually due to the COVID-19. Public comments can be submitted by following the agenda instructions on our website. We will read the first 30 minutes worth of comments as they came in with three-minute time limits for each. Please feel free to join me or not while I say a short prayer to be followed by my saying the Pledge of Allegiance and then roll call. Heavenly Father, I thank you for everything you have blessed us with on this earth. I thank you for this wonderful first day of fall and the change from the summer heat and humidity to this glorious cool weather. While we are in the midst of hurricane season, I pray for those who have been affected in the Gulf. I understand the devastation of the Gulf is going through having experienced it 31 years ago yesterday. Heavenly Father, there is a wonderful circle of life, the beginning with new babies and the joys of watching them grow. However, at the other end, we experience the loss of life. Within our city family, we have recently experienced the loss of several loved ones. Please look over and comfort their families and rejoice in the lives they lived and the legacies they produced. During this unprecedented pandemic, hope everyone realizes that we are all in this together and that we have to work together. Lord, please help us realize that we all have our differences, but these differences are not worth the division the world and our country is experiencing. Please help and guide us tonight as we tackle some of these challenges in making the right decisions that will take us forward for future generations. Please, Father, look over our residents, our city family, our public safety personnel, and our military. I rest in peace knowing that you are always at my side. Amen. Join me as I say the Pledge of Allegiance. Ron, if you would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk Nicole Deneen, roll call, please.
Absolutely. Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Streitman?
Here.
Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Councilmember Popson?
Present.
Councilmember Pounds?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Ward, you're on mute.
Seth, here.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Buchanan? Mayor Carroll?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you very much. First off will be citizens' comments, and please note, number one, that we've had many, many comments, and they're still coming in. I think the last count were over 164 comments, ranging anywhere from the marina, parking, face mask, carter, and more. So we're gonna read the first 30 minutes worth and go from there.
Julie Nessler, 17, 22nd Avenue, please keep Title Wave. I get it, this debate has been going on for a while. I get the verbal and written communication has gone to where no one wanted it to go. At the end of the day, you have a group fighting for their livelihood. Title Wave is fighting for their work, their passion, their community, their family. So many positives of who and what they are over and beyond just a jet ski rental place. Title Wave makes up our community. They are our residents. In addition to all the positives that have already been spoken of, please remember that Title Wave were the ones who stepped up and were willing to get our kids to school free of charge when 526 was shut down. Let's talk mental health. COVID and all the changes our island kids are facing. Title Wave before COVID and currently has always given our island kids a safe harbor as well as so many others. Title Wave is a place where they can go and visit even without renting a ski. There is not a time my daughter has been at the marina that she just runs up to say hello, volunteer to learn the business, clean the marsh, or just say hello to Ginger and crew. They welcome anyone on their dock and treat them like family. The discrepancy of the outdated lease, change it. Make it doable for both parties. Work with each other. I could go on, however, at the end of the day, I question how you can sleep at night knowing that you have shattered livelihoods, especially during COVID. Does it matter to you that one of the owners is expecting a child? Title Wave is a fabric of our community, not just a business. I implore you to keep Title Wave. This is from Gary Bright. I don't know how many of our city council members have managed successful companies, led major not-for-profits, or participated in real quote-unquote branding exercises. I do know that the role of city council is to, within tight limits, protect residents and property, manage a small budget, and improve the image of the island and the value of island property beyond competitive regional rates. The council, quote, "gets to be creative in this realm," close quote. How do we make an island a destination property with premium pricing and values? Every year, residents should expect to see improvement. Your role is most assuredly not to meet the needs of the state, the people of Doily Island or Mount Pleasant, nor does it relate to the Constitution or some broad interpretation of the word access. Surely you have a small tool bag, limited resources, state roadways, and physical constraints. You also have dozens of models and the expertise that the new urbanist movement gave us. I would like to understand your thought processes on some current day issues. Please feel free to contact me. My sense is that the patience of the residents is quote-unquote running thin. If you are not critically interested in the Alapalms safety, brand, and economics, please get off the council now. Lee Tamlin Strickland, 2201 Hartnett Boulevard. Please renew the lease with Title Wave Sports. We own our home on Alapalms and enjoy having their business available for us, family, and friends. They also provide access to the water sports we would not be able to enjoy. Title Wave is a small, family-owned business which deserves our support as they always give back to the community. Christopher Smith, James Island, greatly amused to hear all but one of you shot yourself in the foot charging for parking. Neither my family nor myself will go to the beach, shop, or eat in an IOP restaurant until you short-sighted fools come to your senses. Want to speculate on how big the drop in revenue will be? My guess is near 50%. Oh, by the way, the COVID virus has not been resolved, so tourist traffic could already be down versus a normal year. Judy Donahoe, 1343rd Avenue, Title Wave has been a positive force in this community on so many levels. Please do not put a wonderful, caring, people-based business, local business, out of business. Sarah Parker. We are absolutely heartbroken and extraordinarily disappointed, extraordinarily disappointed with council's vote to end negotiations with our longstanding local treasure, Title Wave Sports. I don't think I could possibly state my reasons for keeping this business on IOP better than Mike Femm's wife. The following is in her words. Quote, "Today, I am heartbroken, heartbroken for the residents of the island, which were poorly represented, and heartbroken for Title Wave Water Sports. I am Michael Femm's wife, and I have never spoken up on one of the island Facebook pages until now. I'm asking everyone to please take time to read my message. I know it's long. First, I want to tell everyone who has supported us, thank you, residents, businesses, and council members alike. From the bottom of my heart, thank you. Over this long two-year fight, your support has often brought us to tears, rendered us speechless, and left us humbled. Truly, everything we do is for you. We have also experienced extreme stress, time lost due to a continued fight for our business's life, and money lost due to this never-ending battle. I wish everyone could remember, we are just three families trying to run the best local business we can. There are individuals behind the entity of Title Wave Water Sports. I'm saddened that the residents' opinions were ignored, and for what? I don't know. Title Wave has been operating within the same size, written into their lease 15 years ago. You are not adding more commercial business to this island because Title Wave is an existing business. Parking is not an issue because they stay within their designated spots and rotate in and out as customers start and finish their experience. Title Wave has offered free shuttle service to the marina. They have offered multiple new lease options that are significantly more profitable to the city. They have offered $50,000 to put in green spaces. There are de-hack limits to fishing that dock due to it being next to a runoff drain. I'm at a loss. Three times now, the locals have come out in numbers, speaking for us in person during citizens' comments, April 2019, voting for us on January 2020, and emailing council in August 2020, not to mention every time in between. Every time delays have been made or the voice of the people ignored. Do not know what else the residents can do since you have consistently been ignored. I wish a clear explanation and could be given by those council members who voted no while hiding behind executive session. For some background, I am a local, born in Rople Hospital and raised on the ICW on Johns Island. My father graduated from the Citadel, then MUSC, and then worked in local hospitals. My mom worked in the public and private school systems down here. I was raised to support my local community as much as possible, whether by giving back or choosing to dine as a dine local versus a chain. I kept that spirit when I graduated college and started working for a local bank, South Coast Community Bank, which was owned by an IOP resident. I took great pride in helping our local businesses thrive and succeed via their banking needs. One of these businesses was Title Wave Water Sports. They were an exemplary customer, and not just because the owners managed a well-run business. It's the little touches. The owner's father served in the military. This has instilled tremendous respect for our armed forces and certain veterans. The same respect held for the disabled, trying to meet each need and to ensure a full experience for all of us. This is meaningful to me because I have been disabled for the last five years. For many summers during their busiest month, Title Wave donated a parasail boat, crew, and owner to Camp Happy Days, which is a camp for children fighting cancer. They parasailed each child, helped volunteer around the camp, and participated in annual fundraising. Title Wave staff has been full of local kids, Citadel cadets, and others with college internships, helping these young individuals understand mechanics, water safety, exceptional customer service, and business management. They offer residents' Days where donations support MUSC, help goat islanders traveling back and forth, have allowed locals to launch kayaks off their dock, are passionate about bringing joy and memories to those who they serve. Title Wave takes the time to be the eyes and ears for water safety, assisting our local fire department, DNR, and Coast Guard with first responder needs. I have been on the dock when a call for help comes in, seeing the staff and my husband rush into action to prevent a disaster. We all remember a few summers ago, the tragic loss of a mother and wife due to a boating accident during a family day, or the tragic loss of Lucas Smith due to an in-air accident which crash-landed in the backwaters. Both times, Title Wave owners and staff were first on scene to pull the injured or dead from the water and assist getting them back to the marina. These three owners have been pioneers within their industry, helping instruct the Coast Guard, putting forth industry-wide safety regulations, and helping run the National Annual Parasail Convention. If you are going to have a water sports company on your island, who better than the one campaigning safety within the industry? I could go on, but hope this helps paint a picture, a whole picture, for not only the business but the owners. Look, we locals have all seen the area grow and change. It's inevitable. Populations are increasing, and we live in a desirable area. It is part of the trade-off living here. We share the beauty, enjoy this area with others who cannot have it year-round. What Johns Island did, fighting against the tide of change, has only caused more infrastructure and building density issues. Where smart planning for the known growth could have alleviated some of the problems they face today. IOP has a great opportunity to recognize the increase in amenities due to the tourism traffic, increased stability and quality of restaurants, a better grocery store, more shopping, and don't forget taxes brought in to help pay for municipal needs. All the cogs and machine need to be present for it to run at maximum efficiency. Title Wave Water Sports is one of those cogs. This is a tragic loss for IOP. Most of all, we will miss you. We'll miss those we have met through the Exchange Club down at our dock or nights at the local restaurants. We will miss the joy on people's faces and beauty of the waterway. We will keep fighting for our business and for our families until the bitter end and hope that you will continue with us in this final month. Thank you. Andrea Femm. Michael, close quote, Michael and Mark, I cannot remember all those. Okay, that's part of another comment. Tim Donahoe, 1343rd Avenue, having been a small business owner, I can really identify with Title Wave. Please reconsider before you pose a positive community-active local merchant out of business. Laura Fogarty, The Boulevard Company, please reconsider a new lease for Title Wave. The vast majority of our community supports this thriving local business and would like for it to remain. Laura. Michael Orinato, 16 Long Grove Avenue in Mount Pleasant. There's no reason to kick these guys off the island and feel if you do, you are only ruining the island. Where will everyone in Wild Dunes go to have fun business sure to drop with no water activities? Also, not to mention, these guys employ so many people over the summer, and the pay is better than most jobs. There's no reason other than greed to not renew their lease and force them out. Michael and Mark have shown amazing support to the community, and they need to stay, or y'all will forever change the island for the worse and let, and us locals will never forget. Let this company stay. Not a single excuse for you all to make them leave, other than greed, shame on every last one of you who voted them out. You will be voted out next. It's only signed Becky. Please save Title Wave Sports, renew their lease. They have been part of IOP. People love them. Do the right thing, renew their lease, or they will be out of a job. And one thing to do, think about others. Kathy Williams, Columbia, South Carolina, our entire family wants Title Wave to stay on Alapalms. We parasail and dolphin cruise every summer and enjoy our time with Title Wave. I have already read her. Also signed Becky. I'm so glad you brought back the free parking, but I heard in 2021 you might get rid of it. One thing, please don't. Us people in Mount Pleasant, Dania Island, Sullivan's Island want free access to the beach. Why charge for parking? If you charge for parking, you will lose tourists. People will not be visiting, spending their hard-earned money. Stop being Republicans and think about what people want. You were elected for the people. Come on, do the right thing. Keep parking free. Okay, let's put it this way. Let's say you lose tourists. People stop coming to the beach. They go to Folly or Sullivan's, and they spend there. You would end up losing out, and you will all be voted out. Come on, do the right thing. Put yourself in the tourist's shoes. Keep parking free, free, free. In fact, all parking should be free, free, free. You make money off the tourists anyways. Please keep the parking free. You will have tourists keep coming and spending. Rusty Williamson, 605 Carolina Boulevard, I strongly urge the mayor of IOP, add to the next city council an amendment to revisit the issue between IOP and Title Wave. Why exactly does the city of IOP want to rid the IOP of a local family-run business? They have agreed to a higher lease, better terms for the city, and funds for green space. What exact issues have led us to this point? It seems a majority of residents of the IOP want Title Wave to stay, but a majority of city council wants to rid the IOP of a local business. It doesn't make sense unless there's something we do not know. Transparency would be nice for a change. Robin, begging, please keep Title Wave. I've emailed y'all but have gotten no response. I don't know a single neighbor who wants them to leave. Uzi Wheeler, 3205 Hartnett. Please utilize the former Title Wave space as green space for residents. I believe residents have indicated this desire since the original referendum. A volunteer committee is already established for assisting planting and upkeep. That in and of itself should indicate the residents' strong desire. Please do not lend to the bend, to the bullying of some residents and non-locals. The threats and hatred need to end, and there is no point going backwards. The residents have spoken on this many times and for quite some time. Do not recent clanging, especially from non-residents. Give us the green space we have asked for. James Golden. I am once again at a point of frustration with council when it comes to council voting on its best interest versus what the majority of the island loudly makes clear. Recently, two years, too regularly, we have seen high-priority decisions made with little or no knowledge or knowledge to or input from our residents. To be honest, it seems the high-priority issues are purposely kept low-profile as the council makes long-term decisions for us without or knowledge of, and the optics reek of alternative motives. Doing the least amount to notify the residents of past decisions is not helpful communication. The current problem is blindly clear. Residents are quickly losing trust and confidence in our council's ability to make honest and unbiased decisions when it comes to our island, especially the marina. Point in case is the marina and its associated businesses. The marina, along with our beaches, are our jewels, and it is a vital heartbeat for our financial survival. As many of you will have moved on from your council membership in the coming years, your decisions will be felt by the island for way too many years when it comes to the future marina and beach decisions. Current reckless development, indoor pre-development actions by council is alarming and costly at best. Let's do the right thing and per what the residents want. Current council does not have the professional knowledge, local support, or trust in the residents to make such long-term island-changing decisions without stronger residential input. Plus, the financial damage your decisions have inflicted on an outstanding neighbor. Title Wave is embarrassing, let alone poor leadership, and an unbelievable lack of compassion to one of our own. Each of you can walk away, no fear. Build a 20-year-old business. Nice job, so disappointing. Additionally, multiple flags and frumble notifications from residents have already been raised regarding one vocal council member's appearance of voting with personal reasons and objections to the marina in general. Again, poor optics and professionalism. This councilman should remove himself from any decisions that regard the marina. Good business, good politics, good for the island. For this reason, I am formally asking one or more of you to make the following motion at the next council meeting, that any future decisions regarding the marina and its tenants will be decided by residential vote. The council will follow the direct wishes of the residential vote until such time as the residents feel the council can manage the process. This will increase residential awareness of what the marina concerns are, costs associated to upgrade, and allow the council the opportunity to act on proven results of the wishes of the majority through transparent methods. This motion is in the best interest of the island and its residents, and I trust all of you will show your support for transparency by allowing the residents to actively vote and determine the outcome of our beaches and the marina. Jeffrey Simon, 9 Live Oak Drive. I would like to thank city council for voting to proceed with promoting the goal of public access space at the marina. Most residents believe the new restaurant will totally change the character of our marina for the better, and resident involvement in the space can only be a positive force in improving what has only been a neglected, unattractive, and unprofitable space. I hear a great sense of optimism from my neighbors about the future of that valuable property that has been supported by our tax dollars for 20 years. Dana and Richard Dunbar, I'm writing to you in hopes, 103 Carolina Boulevard. I'm writing to you in hopes that what I have heard about Title Wave Sports is not true. We have done business with them for years, and I just cannot imagine why all of you would want to terminate the lease and terminate their business, especially in such times that we are currently experiencing with this pandemic. It saddens me, and I hope your decision will be reversed. This business is of value to the community, and it seems the community has spoken in favor of Title Wave Sports. So can you please give me the reasons why the end result was not in their favor? It is not clear. We thoroughly support this business remaining on IOP. Tammy Smith, Rosedale, Virginia, please allow Title Wave to stay. We have come every year that we've come on vacation. Got Julian. My wife and I moved to Goose Creek six years ago. We discovered Title Wave Water Sports and tried their parasailing adventure, which we really enjoyed. That led to another visit later that summer. Each year when family and friends would visit, Title Wave was our go-to location to entertain our guests. Over the years, we've been to Title Wave three or four times a year. Although we don't live on the Alapalms, we made a lot of contributions to the economy, and I'm sure we're not alone in that. Allowing Title Wave to close would be devastating for the community, so I'm asking you to not let that happen. Charleston and the surrounding areas already have a less-than-favorable reputation. If you allow one of the better businesses in the area, it will only put a bigger dent in tourism and the economy. I implore you to consider all of this, and thank you for your time. Kelly Messier, 9 Live Oak Drive, as a landscape artist and full-time resident, I want to applaud city council for voting to establish green space slash public use within the new design of the Marina Restaurant property. I have heard some disparaging remarks that the property in question is too small to be useful. As a design professional, I could not disagree more. I did the design for the property at the head of the new Alapalms Exchange Club dock. I do know it serves to our community and to further the goals of the Exchange Club. I can assure you that small can be appealing, useful, and designed in harmony with the surrounding area. This small parcel can be of significant use, value to our residents, and point of pride for this community. I hope you will move forward rapidly and try to have this project completed by next summer. Bobby Evans, 1026. Since I have not received a reply from my previously sent email in reference to the portable crosswalk signs no longer being deployed along Palm Boulevard on weekends and holidays, I am resending the original message again. Hopefully this time I'll receive a reply with an explanation behind this new policy of not deploying the portable signs. FYI, the signs are not deployed this morning, Friday, August 28th. Also, the permanent no parking sign located at the entrance to the 25th Avenue Beach Access has been removed from the ground and placed in the drainage ditch along Palm Boulevard. I have contacted IOP PD earlier this week via iMessage and advised them of this. As of this morning, the sign had not been removed from the drainage ditch and replanted in its original location. Here is his original message from a few days prior. I am writing this email to express my concern for the safety of pedestrians crossing Palm Boulevard at the designated crosswalks along Palm Boulevard between 21st and 41st Avenues. I noticed after the beach side of Palm Boulevard between 21st and 40th Avenues and Upper Palm between 42nd and 57th Avenues were reopened to free parking. The four-foot chalk line was marked to assist visitors with parking. However, I also noticed that the portable crosswalk signs along Palm Boulevard were not out for the entire weekend. Prior to the closing of parking on Palm Boulevard, portable crosswalk signs were deployed every Friday through Sunday and holidays of the 21st, 25th, 28th, and 41st Avenue crosswalks. These portable signs were deployed to clearly mark the crosswalks for drivers and to assist pedestrians with safely crossing Palm Boulevard during these busy times. I understand the closing of parking along the non-beach side of Palm Boulevard between 21st and 4th Avenues has cut down the pedestrian traffic along Palm Boulevard significantly. There is still a good number of pedestrians coming from the residential areas along the side streets of Palm Boulevard. I feel these portable signs should continue to be deployed throughout the summer season to help keep pedestrians, both residents and visitors, safe while crossing Palm Boulevard. Andrew Wade, 734th Avenue, please do not allow our city mask ordinance to expire on September 16th. I firmly believe it must be extended. Also, please continue with the parking on Palm Boulevard to be on the ocean side only. It's really so much easier and safer to pull out onto Palm for drivers and not have not to have people darting out from between parked vehicles. Angela M. We lease our dock from the city of Alapalms. It expires on September 30th, 2020. Thus far, the council has chosen not to renew our lease. We have offered new lease with terms that almost double with our current rent and it's triple net. It is everything they have been looking for. Also, this rent rate will be three times over the going rate for commercial dock space in the area. Council is bringing it up for a vote on August 25th. Please allow, please follow the link and click. Email all council. Tell them you want Title Wave to stay. Thank you in advance. Christina Ostergaard, 3rd 3 Chapman Avenue. I strongly urge the mayor of IOP and then add to the next city council an amendment to revisit the issue between the city of IOP and Title Wave. Why exactly does the council of IOP want to rid of a local family-run business that has such a great reputation? They have agreed to a higher lease, better terms for the city, and funds for green space. Show proof that this decision was made based on what the residents want. Let the residents make the decision. Emily Ulrich. I want to, I thank and commend all you council members for suffering contentiousness and trying to determine and honor the wish of the IOP community regarding the marina. You have all been great, and we appreciate you. Mary James Wood, 3100 Waterway Boulevard, the job of IOP city council is to listen to its residents and represent what they want in the community. Collectively, you have failed to do so. Renew Title Wave's lease. IOP residents want Title Wave to stay. Your job is not to serve your own interests, it is to serve your community. It is not too late to do the right thing. Show us that you are our council that cares for their people. There is no reason to force another local business to close during this pandemic, especially when they are bringing in money and people who bring their money to the island and support the economy. Additionally, no one wants a quote-unquote "green space" at the marina. We want Title Wave to stay. They care about the community. Do you? Low Country Captain, there is no reason to kick these guys off the island and feel if you do, you're only ruining the island. Where will everyone in Wild Dunes go to have fun business sure to drop with no water activities? Also, not to mention, these guys, we've read this, somebody, this is a double comment. Beth Sharp, 819th Avenue, Title Wave is such a great asset to our island. Erin Graves, I'm sure I'm not the first and won't be the last, but I strongly believe that council owes the residents of this island an explanation about Title Wave. I've never seen more residents agree about anything, and yet there seems to be some unexplained vendetta against these people. I cannot understand the problem here. Please reconsider, or at least consider explaining to all of us why you won't. John Michael Florence of Cynthia, Kentucky, this company hosts a great time and our focus on great service and customer safety. Leslie Gaynor, I am writing to tell you how disappointed I am in your decision to not renew Title Wave's lease. We have been going out with them every summer since they opened, and our children have been fortunate to grow up experiencing water skiing, wakeboarding, jet skiing, tubing, and even parasailing. It was something we looked forward to every year and was always the highlight of our trip. Had it not been for Title Wave, we would not have been able to enjoy water sports as we are not the boat owners. We started as tourists and became as we are not the boat owners. We started as tourists and became property owners and are soon to be full time residents. The femmes have been an asset to the island and ran a very fine and very safe business. One of our daughters had the privilege of working for them and we all have such fond memories. It saddens me that the wishes of a few want out over the wishes of most of the residents. This will be a huge loss to the island's residents as well as tourists who enjoy water sports. I can speak with from both perspectives. I can also speak for many residents who hope that you will please reconsider and renew the lease. Allo Palms will never be the same without tidal wave. Chica Reed, also of Cynthia, Kentucky. This was my first time being able to experience something that this fun and cool. This, the people are nice and are very big on safety and watch and explain what they have, what they expect and what you should expect. They make you feel very comfortable and like family being from Kentucky and visiting your state. That is very appreciated, appreciated, and you should keep the companies that allow your visitors to feel that way. That is very important. Age Grimble, I just wanted to say thank you for serving our wonderful city and its people as a full time resident and local family. We appreciate your efforts in making tough decisions for all of us. I pray that you are not impacted by the undekind bullies I continue to read about and hear stories about. There are better ways to be heard. We are all serving, living and growing together on this beautiful island and we need to work together for the greater good. I look forward to the amazing renovation of our entire waterfront, marina, restaurant and park. Thank you again for your service. Age Elizabeth Fogel, four twelve Merritt Boulevard. This place is amazing. The energy is incredible and it it brings fun and youthfulness to our island. Captain Chris Gaffney. I was a manager at tidal wave before and after their femme bought it. My parents live at 3042nd Avenue. Please vote to allow them to stay. This is important for many reasons. Amanda Nicole Graham of Latson. Title wave is a wonderful enterprise and a great experience. My kids and I loved going going up and seeing the best views of downtown Charleston, Sullivan's Island, Allo Palms and Mount Pleasant. I don't see any valid reason why a business on a dock should not be allowed when it brings so much joy to so many. They are also fun, caring people who don't deserve to lose their jobs. My daughter's kindergarten teacher works there as a summer job and has for years and it's perfect for her. Janet Hall, please reconsider your vote for tidal wave. My husband and I have been residents on I O P for 20 years. We both have run small businesses and are very disappointed in your decision. Please let us know why you made this decision. Belinda Dawn Acatus of Lakeland, Florida. Please don't let the lease arrangement with tidal wave sports end today. Three generations of women slash girls went parasailing. We had a wonderful time and look forward to going again. The crew was absolutely wonderful. They were affordable, knowledgeable and professional, a great asset to the island and the best part of our visit. James Die, please keep tidal wave. Please listen to the residents of I O P and allow tidal wave to renew its lease. Monica Pelletier, 16 Willis Will's Way. I have been concerned for some time that the city is using Roundup slash glyphosate herbicide on the ground. Several recent court rulings have found that continued use by groundskeepers caused cancer. If for no other reason than for fear of litigation against the city, I urge I O P to discontinue use of glyphosate for the safety of our city staff and community. Organic products have been shown to be very effective. And she shares a link to a YouTube video. I would love to see I O P take steps towards a chemical free community. There is even a nonprofit organization dedicated to helping cities across the country. I'm happy to help assist on the communication and transition transition as well and gives a link to nontoxicneighborhoods.org. Lori Ragazzini. And all it says is, let's see tidal wave sports. This business is part of our island. They play a big part in making visitors vacation memories. This is their home. They need to stay. Diana Owens of Latson. I support tidal wave water sports remaining at their I O P location. I love I O P and have been coming since I was a young kid. And I love having the option to enjoy various water sports and their business has always been professional and focused on customer service and safety. They've had my business for a number of years and I'd love to see them stay. Suzie Wheeler. First of all, I would like to apologize on behalf of the community for the vilification and nastiness you all have been subjected to regarding tidal wave lease non renewal is shocking and disgusting that individuals and businesses would treat you this way. I do have several questions I would like clarification on. Number one, when was tidal wave formally notified that their lease would not be renewed? Number two, when the femmes took over the lease in 2006? Why was the requirement for independent financial review stricken from the lease? And who on council was responsible for that decision? Number three, in the social media blitz, there is a suggestion that a new lease was offered at a at double the current rate and with a $50,000 upfront cash infusion. What are the exact terms of that lease? How was it presented? Was it discussed by the real property committee and if so, on what date? Number four has tidal wave remedy dock violations and unpermitted uses. Number five issues, excuse me. Number five, what financial documents has tidal wave provided voluntarily to confirm revenues and expenses at any of their locations? Number six, what is the net profit slash loss to the city by year from the tidal wave lease?
Nicole, one more, please.
Thank you. Beatrice Love, nine sand dollar drive. I am concerned about who will have keys to the new emergency gate planned for Wildwood. I want to be assured it is written that the only key holders will be the fire and police chiefs. They will make the determination of what constitutes an emergency. Once again, I wish council would consider changing short term rentals to a minimum of 30 days in Wildwood and Forest Trails residential neighborhoods.
Thank you very much. I'm amazed that you can get that many in in 30 minutes.
You're very welcome.
Okay, moving on to our agenda, reports from standing committees. Consent agendas, which we approved several months ago. We have three items of previous minutes, public hearing on August 25th, 2020. Regular meeting on August 25th, 2020. And a special meeting on September 15th, 2020. Number two, consideration of an award of a contract to Nicholson Business Systems for the record management system in the amount of $38,999, $90 coming from Capital Projects Fund Police Department Capital Outlay 30,000. And number three, consideration of purchase of Beach Services Four Wheel Drive Pickup Truck. State contract pricing in the amount of $26,070. Budget is from hospitality fund, police department capital outlay was budgeted 30,000. Again, this was already voted on. The consent agenda allows us to vote all as one. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I've moved that we accept the consent agenda.
Second. During then, roll call, please.
Absolutely. Councilmember Bell.
Hi.
Councilmember Streetman.
Hi.
Councilmember Moy.
Hi.
Councilmember Popson.
Hi.
Councilmember Pounds.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Hi.
Councilmember Ward.
Hi.
Mayor Carroll.
Hi.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Moving on, Ways and Means, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We'll hit a financial summary real quick first, Ron, if you don't mind putting up the financial summary as of August 31st, please, sir. Thank you very much. So this is results through August. You can see revenue on the top parts about a million five thirty rough numbers. Our expenses about 2.4 million for the year to date through August. You can see Debbie's notes at the bottom. August 20 revenues are in line with expectations at this time of the year. Majority of our spending has been outside of the general fund relates to the public safety building where we spent about half a million so far in fiscal 21. General fund revenues are running about 6% ahead of the prior year and expenditures are flat compared to August 2019 levels. So that's good news on the revenue side. And currently city has about 19 million in cash deposits, about seven and a half is restricted. So Mr. Mayor, that is it for the financial review unless there are questions.
Any questions?
Ron, if you'll go right back to that next page, please, sir, on the reassessment. So Mayor, I'll just jump into the line items. We have a discussion and consideration of 2020 reassessment and millage rollback. And if I can just do a little bit of commentary before we have a motion, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay.
Absolutely, sir.
So you've seen, for those of you that were in Ways and Means last week and for residents that may be watching that weren't. This first page is a recap of the next three pages. So this year is a reassessment year by the county. And what we've tried to portray on this page that's up on the screen now is the first column tax year 2019 actual. That's what we have today. That's what I O P millage is, our revenue is off of this total value of real property. You can see our millage number there at 24.7 in the green in the first column. So that's where we sit today, 24.7 and just by way of reference Sullivan's is 50. Point nine, Mount Pleasant is 41. And folly is 36.9. So we're coming in significantly under most of our neighboring communities. So what we've tried to show in option A, B and C is kind of a minimum midpoint and a max on what you, what the city could do this year. So option A would be rolling back our operating millage. And again, in the green, you can see that currently at 21.3 to roll back to adjust for the increase in the assessed value. And you can see that line item highlighted in blue. So on average values are up 13% on the island. And again, just for a reference point, Mount Pleasant is also up about 13%. Sullivan's about 11 and county wide is about 12%. And we'll look at some actual properties in just a minute, but again, that's just an average increase in the assessed value on the island. So below that in the green is what we're showing as options. So again, the first option A is to roll back the operating millage to adjust for the 13% increase. So our operating millage would go from 21.3 to 19.1. And for a total service millage of 23.3. Option B would state law allows you to take option A, which is the rollback, which is required and add a CPI growth number to it, which also supplied by South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office that this year is 2.18%. So that would let us take option A plus 2.18%. And then option C lets you do option A. And if you haven't done a CPI adjustment in the last three years, which I O P has not done that, you could kind of catch up if you will. So that would be 8.58%. So you can see what that does in the green rose to our operating millage if we did each one of those options. So Ron, let's go to the next page, please, sir. So what we've tried to do here, Debbie has done is, and this is a little bit different than what you saw at Ways and Means last week. And I'll show you what the difference is. So this is option A where we're doing the rollback. And you can see that the middle column where you have the 2019 appraised values, 400,000 up through 5 million. That's taking the average 13% increase across any property and showing what the effect would be on primary residents, second homeowners and commercial property over to the right. So not, not a huge increase at any particular level. But at the bottom are actual values of houses. So from the bottom 10, 457,000 to 3.025 million. Those are actual properties on I O P. And Debbie has shown the effect of what this looks like with the 15% cap. So there was an attachment in your package and most residents should have gotten your reassessment value at this point. It's capped at 15% is the largest increase that can happen to your property. So in that first example, you'll see 457,000 currently on the left hand side. Full reassessment would go to 576,300, but because of state law caps it at 15%, it only goes to 525,550. And again, over to the right in blue, you can see the increase in value. A number of those are capped. And then to the right in green, you can see the increase in taxes at an individual property level. So let me stop there for a second before we go to the other options. Any questions on this? Like I said, it's the exact same thing you saw last week at Ways and Means for those of you that have seen this package before. But we've Debbie's added in the 15% cap. So a little bit different view this time. Susan.
Yes, thank you. I have a question just to make sure that with the cap in place, there's no potential that we could come up short. And we're in as we roll back our millage. Is that all been taken into account?
Yeah, Ron, if you'll go back a page, please, if you don't mind, real quick, I'll show you that Susan where our budget effect, if you will, the numbers didn't change at a top of the house level, if you will, at our budget level. So if we did the rollback in the kind of tan orange number at the bottom.
Yeah.
All assumptions hitting like we think they might this year, we would have about $119,000 extra in the budget from tax revenue, from tax property tax revenue based on these numbers, Susan.
Okay, so we've got some wiggle room there.
Little bit, yeah. I mean, it's it 119,000 is pretty slight wiggle room, if you will. Give it a total budget and you're making some assumptions to get to that number though. Yeah. That is your question, Susan?
I, I think so. I mean, I just, I, I recognize that there's some wide variance potential and, and the percentage that some houses are going up or down. So I just wanted to make sure that the cap of 15% didn't put us in a position where we, like I said, we're coming up short.
Yeah. So this page that you're looking at currently from last week is exact same numbers. The county numbers fed to us already took the cap into effect. The really changed. Ron, if you go back to the next page again, please.
If that was, yeah, if the cap was included in their numbers, that's fine then.
That's correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. So Ron, if you go one more page is option B. Again, that's the rollback millage plus the 2.18% CPI growth. Next page, Ron, option C is three years worth of CPI growth. So that gives you a feel for again, at the individual property level where that would, where that would have an effect. So Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we choose option A for this year from a rollback standpoint and only adjusting option A takes into account the rollback and increases our millage for the drainage project.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Quick, quick comment, Mayor.
Yes, sir, please.
I, unless something's changed, I think everyone should be aware, we do not know what the county intends to do. And we're in a position where we're making this choice absent information from the county. That's still correct?
That's correct, Randy. Thank you for saying that. I should have said that earlier.
Yeah. No problem.
Any other questions? Here now. Roll call.
Councilmember Ward.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Hi.
Councilmember Popson.
Hi.
Councilmember Bell.
Hi.
Councilmember Streetman.
Hi.
Councilmember Moy.
Hi.
Councilmember Pounds.
Hi.
Mayor Carroll.
Hi.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Mayor, next item is consideration of award of a contract to Simon's dredging corporation in the amount of 4 million, 304 and $8 for the Marina Dock Rehabilitation Project and Bulkhead Recoding. Again, if I can just run through a couple of slides before we have a motion. I'll do that if you're all right with that. Again, mostly what you saw last week at Ways and Means and those for those residents that weren't on that call. We had three bids come in and you can see those listed here and how they line up with particular items and how, how they got to the total. So we had bids ranging from 2.7 million up to 3.46 million rough numbers. Ron, if you'll go next, please. So we have a floating dock system aluminum and you'll see the next slide where we had a handful of alternative items. We asked the bidders to price for us. Some will use, some we won't. Hang on, Ron, go back one slide. One that we will implement is E pay decking. Some of you are very familiar with that. Works well with the aluminum floating docks that will have limited maintenance, long lasting. So we would like to add this to this particular project. Go ahead, Ron, to the next one. Another alternate item we asked folks to bid on was the finger in pedestals. Won't bore you with details because we've chosen not to do this particular item. Next one, Ron, is a bulkhead recoding. We had priced, we had folks priced two items for us here. This one came in significantly above budget and we'll look at that in just a minute, but we're recommending option one on this particular piece. Next item is builder's risk insurance, which we'll certainly take. Next item is intercoastal dock modifications, which we've chosen not to add to the project. And the last alternate item was the fuel hut. The bid for our one, we're going to recommend came in at 130,000. However, we're going to replace order about 100,000 in the budget and hope to have that significantly lower than 100,000 by the time we get to construction. So Ron, if you go one more page, so just to give you a feel for what we had in the fiscal 21 budget, we had 2.875 for the dock rehab and about 334,000 for the bulkhead recoding for a total project of 3.2. So on the right hand side, you see the proposal from Simmons that we're going to recommend hopefully here in a moment as the base bid of two, seven, adding in three alternatives that we added, the E pay decking builders risk insurance and the fuel hut. As we've done with recent projects, building in a contingency for As we've done with recent projects, building in a contingency for the just in case that we know will have. So that is, takes us to three point three seven eight million. The bulkhead again was significantly over our original estimates at eight hundred and four thousand. So let me hang on one second, Ron, go back to the slides. Let me just stop there for a second, then I want to cover two more slides, Mayor, and then we'll vote if that's okay.
Yes, sir, please.
Any questions at all on John?
Just a comment that the, the fuel hut is presented as an alternative based on the way that the companies were to bid it. But it's actually a required part of our contractual obligation, as I understand it.
Desiree, I think that's a true statement.
Yes, that is, that is correct. We are including a placeholder of a hundred thousand dollars, but our plan is to negotiate and value engineer that fuel hut. And earlier estimates have it around sixty seven thousand. So that's where we think that we will, we will ultimately land. So, yeah.
Jimmy Ward, sorry, Mayor.
Mr. Chair, if I'm not mistaken, at a hundred and thirty thousand, I think that hut came out to over six hundred dollars a square foot. I think we can probably do that hut for a little bit less than six hundred dollars a square foot.
I'm hopeful. Yeah, one of the bids was actually over two hundred thousand, but anyway, Jimmy Ward, question?
There's measurement made. Is that correct to approve this?
Not yet. Let me go through two more slides and then we'll have a motion.
Philip, if I may make a comment first. I followed up with Ron Hanna, and to his credit, he, he did the homework. But the Southern Pine alternative to the E-Pay decking had a ten to fifteen year life. So the likelihood would be that we would be replacing that right at the, the term of the, the debt servicing. So, you know, there is clear justification for spending additional money to get twenty plus years out of E-Pay decking.
Yeah, thank you, Ron. Thank you. Other questions? Real quick. All right, Ron, go one more slide. So just in the interest of full disclosure, some on the screen or some listening may be wondering, didn't we just have a referendum around this topic in twenty seventeen? And what we've shown here that Desiree and Debbie have prepared is comparing the original or the twenty seventeen referendum, which can included numerous upland improvements of a million, eight, six rough numbers, which we are not taking into account here. You can see the docks, you can see the other differences. Bulkhead was not considered in the twenty seventeen referendum total number in twenty seventeen. And again, this was, these were estimates, not real life bids. So I'm guessing that five and a half million might have increased, just like our numbers have this year, but I don't know that. But just to be fair, that five and a half million in twenty seventeen was strictly a, an estimate number as opposed to the twenty twenty numbers you're looking at now or actual bid numbers.
It did not include the bulkhead at all.
The twenty seventeen does not. That's correct.
Yes, right.
Yep. And, you know, interest rates in twenty seventeen were, you know, probably a point to a point and a half higher, depending on your credit rating than what we'll get this year. And I'll show you a comparison slide in just a minute from what we have in budgets. So Ron, if you'll go to the next slide. So as you all know, the city is contractually responsible for the Marina Docks and Bulkhead. That's the significant difference from the twenty seventeen referendum, which included a significant amount of upland improvements. This is just taking care of the docks. Twenty, again, twenty seventeen numbers are based on cost estimates, not bids. Twenty seventeen, Rusty, to your point, did not improve. It did not include improvements to the bulkhead. Debt service in twenty seventeen was proposed to be serviced with Marina rent revenues and tourism funds, just like it is in our twenty one budget. So Ron, if you'll go to the next, the last page, please, sir. So this, hard to see, but it'll give you a sense for the bottom is what is in our fiscal twenty one budget. Three point two oh nine million at a four percent interest rate in fifteen years. The top, based on information we've gathered since we've started this process with our financial advisor and our bond counsel, we're assuming an interest rate of two and a half percent, hope we'll beat that, but a new principal amount of four point three million. So we'll pay less in total interest, but more in, up in principal money. And you can see the differences at the very bottom of that, that particular screen. So questions on that before we go to a motion and vote? A lot of numbers I know flying around, but I just wanted to give you a feel for referendum difference to where we are today, what it means to our budget from a, from a interest rate standpoint. So Debbie, thank you for putting all that together and doing that research. So Mayor, I will, I'll make a motion that we accept and award a contract to Simon's dredging corporation in the amount of four million, three oh four, three hundred and four thousand and eight dollars for the Marina Dock Rehabilitation Project and Bulkhead Recoding.
We have a motion. I want to take a second. We have a second from Councilmember Bell. Questions, Councilmember Ward?
So this comes in one point, one million dollar over budget. Is that correct?
Yeah.
According to fiscal year twenty one budget Marina Fund debt proceeds, three point two zero nine thousand, page twenty nine, thirty. Is it over budget or not?
Yes, it's over budget.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
The Councilmember Ward's question or statement, what it did includes an eight hundred and fourth argument for the bulkhead recoding. And that's something that in the saltwater environment, if we don't recoat that, it's going to fail on its soup. Pulling out all these pilings and docks, it just makes common sense for us to spend the money and just do this project right and make it last a long time. Thank you.
Okay.
Just, was it myself, Jim? Two, two, two things. And one, Philip, that wasn't mentioned, this is the second time we've gone out for bid on the bulkhead. So it was anticipated in the first go around that we'd be in the three hundred fifty thousand dollar realm. That didn't happen. We thought we would save money by combining, combining it with this project. The bids came in again, similar contractors did not happen. And just a reminder, the consequence of this is the Marina lease that we have to do this for the dock repairs. So, you know, we can look back to when that lease was approved and who approved it and recognize that we're working our way through the legacy of the city's responsibility to maintain these docks. We don't have an option.
Any other? Mayor, Desiree, I'm sorry, I didn't offer you a comment here if you needed to add something and I'm out of there. Sorry about that.
You got it all.
Um. Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I just thank you. I just would thank Councilmember Pounds for the, and Debbie for showing the difference, the comparison between what was being discussed during the referendum and what we're looking at now. I think that was really helpful. And I hope that we'll continue to do that kind of thing in the future. We're trying to explain some of these complicated topics to the public.
Thank you, Susan. Appreciate that.
Anyone else? Nicole?
Councilmember Bell?
Hi.
Councilmember Streetman?
Hi.
Councilmember Moy?
Hi.
Councilmember Popson?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Hi.
Councilmember Ward?
Hey.
Councilmember Pounds?
Hi.
Mayor Carroll?
Hi.
Motion passes seven to one.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two other quick items from the Ways and Means meeting last week. We discussed our general obligation bond financing schedule and our desire to hopefully close that right before Thanksgiving around November twenty fourth. Our next meeting of Ways and Means is Tuesday, October twentieth at six P M. And that's it.
We're such a big and important committee. That was a great report. Thank you very much.
It's a little bit anticlimactic after all the work on these docks, isn't it?
Okay, moving on, public safety. Our chair is not with this. Our vice chair?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Public Safety Committee met at nine A M. Monday, September fourteenth. This is a meeting, of course, called the COVID nineteen. We had approval, approval of the previous meetings minutes and citizens' comments for read and to the record. Old business, there's update on the public safety building rehab project. And it was reported that the rehabilitation project is on time and under budget. So that's really good news. Then we went to an update on implementation of paid parking plan on existing public beach parking zones. The administrators stated after council approved pursuing the plan last month, we gave a go ahead to Stuart Day and Stan Tech to develop the drawings that are going to have to be submitted to South Carolina Department of Transportation for the revised encroachment permit. And they have met with representatives from Flowbird that will show the new areas incorporated into the beach parking plan. After that, we had the first reading of the draft of the plan after some South Carolina Department of Transportation gives us approval on the encroachment permit. We had an update and discussion of elimination of parking on the landward side of Palm Boulevard between twenty second and fortieth avenues due to public safety concerns. Committee members agreed that the intent was to permanently eliminate parking on land side of Palm Boulevard. The administrator said that she had a conversation with South Carolina DOT and their position is that we would have to submit that as part of the same modified permit application that includes changes for the paid parking changes. S C D O T decision remains that the city has jurisdiction over parking over in the community, such as recommendations that are made to the Public Safety Committee. Discussion of improvements on the ocean side of Palm Boulevard between twenty first and twenty first, twenty first avenues. There is a long discussion that, as we all know, is going to take a lot of work. There's so much that goes into this drainage infrastructure that need, need to be researched and find out how it's going to be affected. It's going to be a, a long term project. We had an update on pedestrian crosswalks and intersection safety. And the administrator stated that S C D O T cannot explain the inconsistency of replacement of stop bars at Palm Boulevard intersection, which everybody is very interested in having those in more frequent places than we have them. The police chief reported that S C D O T will only approve a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at crosswalks, at crosswalk, excuse me, and there's a little bit more discussion on that. Update on evaluation of speed limits on residential side streets. Councilmember Buchanan stated the S O T is not going to change, allowing change in the speed limit without traffic study. And that would have to take adding a traffic engineer. Further discussion will be had on this issue. We had a brief discussion on front beach loading zone and parking. And the chief is waiting to hear back from a company that handled signage and striping of the area. We may have to draft an ordinance to change to park in those areas. What we're specifically interested in, and I think I speak for Councilmember Buchanan, is he was saying that some of the businesses wanted to open up the loading zone parkings in the evening when the deliveries aren't being made for customers of the restaurants down there. We had an update on the Wild Dunes Emergency Exit. And a document agreement, agreeing to the, to the requirements of the agreement has been signed. Administrator said that residents of Wildwood will be included and updated throughout the process. And I hope that they will be included and updated throughout. I had one email from one resident said they had not at that point. We had a thorough discussion of refurbishment of the prumper truck for the fire department in two thousand thirteen. And that's still in process. It's going to take a lot of money, a lot of time. But the thing is that we want to, which the, the, the goal is to try to get the fire station rehab done before the new trucks and the rehab refurbished trucks are back in there. Then we had consideration award to mix and business systems, which we already discussed in Ways and Means. We also had discussion of the four wheel pickup truck that was discussed and voted on Ways and Means. We went into discussion of entering a mutual aid agreement with the City of North Charleston and Town Somerville. And these agreements, everyone agreed are, are good to have. And we have the discussion of handicap parking, adding handicap parking on Forty Second Avenue. The police chief said that one more handicap parking space should become available. And he was going to look further into the issue, but not foresee any issues with additional handicap spots there. We had highlights of department reports from the fire chief and the police chief miscellaneous business. The next meeting will be held on Monday, October fifth, two thousand twenty at nine A M. We, the meeting was adjourned at nine fifty five A M. There is my report.
Mr. Chair, is that a action item, a consideration of eliminating parking on the landward side of Palm Boulevard between twenty second and fortieth avenue?
Yes, sir. Yes, it is.
Motion from you?
Yes, sir. Motion to approve.
Right here, a second. I have Councilmember Pounds, second discussion. Chief, I'd like to have both chiefs kind of weigh in on this a little bit. Chief Cornet and Chief Graham, with parking on one side, since we've had the emergency order, have y'all, what is your view of what's going on on Palm Boulevard from an emergency point of view?
I was going to try to be a gentleman and let Chief Graham go first.
I'll be happy to get first. I figured it was more of a police issue. I think no matter what we do, it's going to be safer if we reduce the traffic on Palm. The fire trucks will get down to a call one way or another. However, people crossing the road has always been dangerous. And ever since we did the parallel parking, I feel that that has increased the congestion and more delays in the traffic, people trying to wait for a spot. So anything we can do to reduce it, one way or another, the fire trucks will get to the call.
Thank you very much. Chief Cornet?
From the law enforcement side, I think anytime we could say that people were not crossing the road, it would obviously be safer. However, the statistics would show from us that we have not had incidents involving any unsafe practices. There basically has not been a collision that I could find that has resulted from somebody crossing the road inappropriately or vehicles driving inappropriately. My opinion would be that it's always safer if we could say people don't cross the road. But the statistics here do not show that we have a, an issue at this point with that. As far as vehicles and emergency vehicles going down the roadway, we've been able to manage it so far. It would be nice to have a little more room on the sides for vehicles to be able to pull off of the roadway so that vehicles could get through there. Those roads do get pretty, pretty busy during the season. And I've watched fire trucks come through there and seeing as the cars try to move out of their way. Sometimes it works well. I think a little more room on the side would, would certainly benefit them to have a response. It's easier for us as a vehicle to get through. They have a, a much bigger truck than I do.
Thank you. Councilmember Streetman?
Yes, a couple of things to note here. There is no doubt that it's been much better from a safety standpoint, traffic wise on Palm since we eliminated the, put the emergency order in on the land side there to eliminate parking on that side. I mean, just simply people aren't flipping around through the avenues, making U turns, three point turns, that sort of thing. So that's been a, that's been a real plus. And, and quite honestly, I tell you, unless we get shoulders fixed on Palm Boulevard on both sides, it's going to be tough for people to pull off anyway for emergency vehicles. I mean, it's really torn up in certain places, as we all know. But, you know, with a lot of that's just simply because we've had so much rain. And it's soggy and just basically a swamp in certain areas on both sides of Palm. But I, I think this is the right thing to do. We're still providing ample parking, much more parking than we actually have to. And, and I think it's going to be a good move for us.
Thank you. And Councilmember Moy and then Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my, my question is, we're, we're making a lot of changes to parking. And I'd like to at least entertain the discussion as to whether we should continue making incremental changes and evaluating after we make said changes. For example, you know, we've just voted on parking last month. But I will, I'll, I'll look to Chief Graham because what we hear from Chief, Chief Cornet is we're not seeing a, a major difference in collisions or anything of that nature from a safety standpoint. So the only thing that I, that I really heard that could be potentially impactful is the, through um, the ability for fire trucks to get through um, in an expeditious manner. Um, have you, your, your point was that cars might be backing up or cars back up and cause a, a challenge for fire trucks to get through because they're looking for spots. And um, my question is, have you seen, um, I, I know you want data to support this, so it's going to be a gut feel. But have you seen a difference with that side, that landward side being closed off? Have you seen a difference? Um, has that actually alleviated the people searching for spots? Because now they're, they're searching for less spots, but there could be potentially more people looking for spots, I guess is what I'm getting at.
I believe that the uh, the ocean side, it's the same and as it always will be. The landward side, we have seen a difference with uh, the less traffic backing up, looking for a spot prior to eliminating parking on that side of the road. Um, I would drive down on the weekends, coming back from the marina. If someone saw a family going towards their car, the traffic would come to a complete standstill. And the person first in line would be, they had waited out regardless of how long it took till they get, till they can get to that spot.
How many, how many weekends a year, how many days a year would you say that this is an issue?
Well, it hasn't been an issue lately because of the uh, the way the traffic.
Right.
However, um, I would say that anytime that there's a family crossing towards Palm, towards the landward side and somewhat, if, if someone wants a spot, they are going to wait it out. Same problem on Ocean Boulevard that we've had for many years.
And then I, I'm sorry, I just have one more comment and that'll be, I won't have a second one. Uh, but that is that, um, we do have residents that will um, not be able to use that, that parking. So those residents that live on Palm Boulevard on the landward side, um, their guests and those owners, um, they will not be able to use this parking as well. So folks who have been kind of considering that part of their parking for years will no longer be able to use that. It's an important note for us, I think.
Correct. Councilmember Smith.
Uh, thank you. A couple of things. I'll start with um, the fact that I, I believe that the chief mentioned what I think is just the, maybe a common sense thing that if you, if you have people crossing the street at potentially 150 different places where they've parked, because many people don't pay attention to the crosswalks. Um, the confusion that that creates in addition to the visibility issues of the cars themselves being parked uh, along the roadway, um, both for pedestrians and for people pulling out of the cross streets. Um, all of those things and in addition to the left-hand turns and U-turns that you're leaving the door open to, um, I think creates a, a cascade of safety issues that even though maybe no one has been hurt yet, we don't want to find ourselves in that position. So for the safety of everybody involved, both our visitors and our residents, um, I, this is the core of why I would recommend doing, uh, why I will support this and vote for it down the road if we're able to remake Palm Boulevard into a um, more of a gateway that includes better access for pedestrians and bicyclists. I, I think maybe we could revisit this if we're able to create a safer space, perhaps also with the median that would allow for parking on both sides of the, of the street. So I, I would, while this has been called permanent, I would like it, I would like to leave that door open for later down the road. Um, and then uh, let's see, I'm sorry, what? Oh, okay. Um, yeah, that was the, the main thing that I, main point I wanted to make. Um, just, this is really about safety. Um, and I, I think it's an important decision for us right now in this moment.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers? Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'd just say real quick, in your package and Susan, to your point, there's a couple of drawings uh, from Stan Tech. One from all the way back in 2013 that kind of has a grand Palm view, which is awesome if we could ever get to that point. And another one that has a little bit, you know, lesser, lesser view with bike, bike rack, back, bike trails and such. So I, I think I would agree with you. I think there's opportunity and I think there's some really neat designs and we have plenty of right of way to do it. Um, so I think that's a good point, Susan.
I'm sorry. I did forget. I've got one more. I know it's my second time.
Go ahead.
Um, I did want to ask that we have discussed the possibility or about having designated golf cart spacing on the land side clusters close to the crosswalks. Um, and so I, I'm assuming since it hasn't been brought up that that's not being recommended. I do think that that would um, both provide space for residents on that side of the street so that they don't have to be crossing with their golf carts um, and searching for spaces. It would also alleviate strain on numbers of spaces available for our visitors as well.
Um, councilmember Smith, I'm going to let Desiree fill in here because there are some requirements that we have to adhere to if we go this route. Desiree?
Um, yes. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, after councilmember Smith brought, you know, that point up about uh, potentially banning golf cart parking on the land side of Palm, I, I talked to the traffic engineer in Stan Tech who's been working with the city for many, many years. And mainly the concern that was expressed to that idea is uh, confusion. It will just be confusing and it would require a lot of signage to properly designate those areas as just only golf cart parking. Um, all of these potential changes or recommendations from council have to go through the SC DOT. And we also have concerns about um, trying to argue that it would be safe for golf carts, golf cart parkers to cross the road, whether or not they use the crosswalks that are, that are currently um, in place. Um, but not safe for vehicles and um, for, for guests using vehicles to cross the road. So I think that that would be difficult to, to be able to argue and in, and just the concern that it would be confusing if people um, are driving down the road and not understanding why golf cart parking can be um, allowed in, in certain sections of Palm and not vehicular, um, not vehicles. So that, that's part of the reason why we didn't, we're not recommending that change from the staff's perspective.
Councilmember Smith, um, golf carts, if they're properly marked, the avenues are resident-only parking. And so golf carts that are properly marked and parked on the avenues in the right of ways along there, you know, up closer to Palm. So that probably would resolve a lot of that that you're talking about.
And that would include rental golf carts too, right? If you have short-term rentals or they rent a golf cart, those are welcome as, as, as well.
If they have a permit, if they are properly permitted um, by the police department, then yes, if they're properly credentialed. If not, then.
Residential, right, right.
Anyone else?
I, I just, I, I guess, Mayor, just um, for the record, I just wanted to add that, you know, we have been seeing um, potential increased traffic in the residential neighborhoods. And we are seeing beach parking migrate from the middle section of Palm Boulevard, which has historically been the, the beach parking area, moving towards the other end of Palm Boulevard, which before maybe this year or last year, we hadn't seen a whole lot of beach traffic. Um, I just wanted to make sure that folks understand that, you know, eliminating parking on the land side of Palm due to, you know, very valid public safety reasons may continue to increase traffic down, you know, the other um, area of Palm. Um, potentially increased traffic down on Palm Boulevard as people are looking for, for, for vehicles. One thing that we are trying to address by the use of the mobile app that we are planning on doing for the pay parking is we've asked them to develop a um, a mechanism where people, as they log in to pay, pay to park, they will be able to see the occupancy of the different zones along Palm Boulevard. So um, we would be giving them a parking count per section and maybe we divide Palm Boulevard into five different sections. And um, folks, as they are looking for spaces to park, they can see whether, you know, between 21st and 25th, 26th, 26th Avenue, maybe it shows red, which means that it's high occupancy. The likelihood is that it's already full. And maybe people will continue to drive down Palm and not reduce their speed, trying to find a, a, a parking spot in the, in that section. And maybe go to an area that's showing yellow or green, which means that there's, you know, maybe it's less than 30% occupied. So we're trying to work that out um, from a practical and a logistical perspective of trying to make it convenient for people to know where parking is available on, on the beach district, um, beach parking district. And um, ideally, you know, with time, people will get used to the new system and um, potentially reduce reduce or address um, any traffic backup. So that's what we're trying to do, uh, because I think it's to, to councilmember Moy's point, you know, we're going to be implementing a lot of, a lot of changes that people have not been used to. And we're just trying to do everything we can to communicate that to people and make it as convenient as, as we can.
Anyone else? Uh, for my second um, little comment, councilmember Pounds, uh, representative with the COG. Um, the Beach Reach app that they have created, we need one more page on air where our police departments can, as Desiree just eloquently described, I have a chart, 50% full, 60% full, 70%. And people driving from Somerville will know if it's 90% full, maybe they might want to think about another alternative than coming to the beach. So again, if you would talk about that with the COG and that one app. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And then more comments? Hearing none. Nicole?
Mayor?
Desiree?
I'm, I'm sorry. Okay. So as we mentioned before, this will have to be included in the encroachment permit to SC DOT and approved by SC DOT. Um, we've been waiting on this action and clarification from council so that we can include it in the same permit about paid parking that we've been working with SC DOT on. Um, so I, I think later on the agenda, you all have uh, for consideration extending the emergency ordinance. But currently the land side of Palm is, is prohibited as part of the emergency ordinance and trying to reduce crowding on the beach and, and increase social distancing by limiting parking in some way. Um, so if, if that is not extended, then the city, the land side would become available again on Palm until the plan is approved by SC DOT and it can be implemented by staff. Um, so just a, just a, a point of clarification on that.
Thank you very much. And if I'm not mistaken, I think that um, emergency order expires on October 13th.
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay. Nicole?
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Streitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Nay.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to one.
Thank you very much. Okay. And councilmember Ward, I think that ended your report.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Moving on, Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. We met on uh, Thursday, September 3rd at eight o'clock. We virtual meeting via Zoom. All members were present. Um, typical, very good reports from our director and assistant director in progress that just continues to be made month to month with those folks. And Rusty, to your comment about um, you know, the parking on Palm, Robert has finished an inventory, if you will, of the problem areas along Palm Boulevard between 21st and 57th in trying to get ahead of the game for paid parking implementation. So he's done some work already there. We had update on phase three drainage project and the other small internal drainage projects going on. Continued our discussion of outsourcing household garbage collection services and continuing to look at that data. Um, really good discussion around a cutting agreement between the city and Dominion Energy. Desiree and I met with representative from Dominion three weeks ago-ish, somewhere in there. And had a really good discussion and Desiree had a really good idea as opposed to a tree cutting agreement. I think we're going to attempt to head down a path with a memorandum of understanding that I think will be more IOP centric and allow us to make it much more applicable to our city, mayor and council. Um, so that, that is in the works. We'll continue to have conversations with Dominion around that. We also had a really good discussion around the non-standard service fund and the list of eligible product, projects. There was a list done by Dominion in 2016 of about six projects that we could potentially use that bucket of money for. You remember it's about 300-ish thousand, I think, if top of my head. Um, so about six projects, we're, we look at those, we'll continue, we're looking for cost estimates from Dominion on those particular six projects. So Mayor, we're going to keep this topic in front of us every month as a standing agenda item. Um, to kind of hold our own self-accountable and Dominion's feet to the fire, if you will, on an agreement of some form and the ability to use this non-standard service money that's available to us. Um, our next meeting is Thursday, October 1st at 8:00 AM. And that's it for the Public Works.
Any questions for Public Works? Hearing none. Moving on, Recreation.
Thank you. Um, Recreation Committee meeting uh, was held on September 14th with all members present as well as our city administrator and Recreation Director Paige. Who delivered her report. Uh, lots of stuff going on and I'll mind, remind everybody that uh, October is coming and Halloween is not that far off. So we've made adjustments uh, as a result. Some things are staying the same. Pumpkin painting will be held October 16th. Ghostly Tide Tales will be held on the beach, October 23rd with incorporating the Crab Pot Players for a new twist. Um, and Golf Cart Parade will be, so in terms of actual Halloween festivities, this will be different this year because of COVID. But the rec uh, staff has put their thinking caps on and come up with something that should be a lot of fun, which is a golf cart parade and drive-through haunted house. Uh, so the times are different. The parade lineup will start at 3:30. And there will be winners for the best three decorated carts. Uh, the parade will end with the haunted house. So if you want to, I believe you have to register to take part in the parade. Um, so be looking for that registration to start on October 5th. And we hope that we will have just as much enthusiasm as we usually do for our Halloween festivities every year. Um, the Isle of Palm Connector and Walk Run has been canceled this year because of COVID concerns. But monies raised through sponsorships will still benefit the local charities. Uh, the Holiday Street Festival is still uh, in the works, but will be different to support social distancing. This isn't listed, but if I remember correctly, we're looking at potentially doing an outside movie. I'll let our rec director correct me if I'm wrong about that. We're good. Okay. Yeah. So we're looking at a movie for, for that. I, I'm sure a holiday classic or something fun. Um, and otherwise we still, we have, we do have new, you know, activities starting back up like I, I believe it's three-on-three basketball, uh, kids soccer and table tennis are in full, full swing. Um, that we have not had any COVID-related issues in the past a couple of months and but the staff is still continuing to take precautions. Teenagers is going to crank back up in October if everything goes according to plan. Um, we did discuss support for senior citizens during this time and uh, it was noted that um, a program with the Exchange Club for grocery delivery really wasn't taken advantage of. Uh, people really didn't sign up for it, but um, we may look at a, a potential program that Sullivan's Island is doing to pair elderly members of their community with younger families, which predates COVID, but I believe they've had success with. Um, we had a discussion around opportunities to support paddle sports in the community that relates to conversations that are going on around um, the tidal wave dock and how that could potentially be used in other ways. Um, we did, I think it's important to note that um, our, our rec director and one of our members of our committee discussed concerns about the potential safety of having a kayak and paddleboard launch at that dock because of the boat. paddleboard launch at that dock because of the boats that are going by. And I think that's, I agree that that's something that we need to be considering. But there is enthusiasm for promoting paddle sports, and we can be a part of that conversation, our committee, and would be glad to look at including the potential for a, a storage facility for kayaks and paddleboards. We also had a discussion of landscaping practices related to chemical use at the rec center. This is kind of, I believe, a starter conversation, but good for us to know what the rec staff is doing. As we know, we have, the grounds look amazing. And our, our rec director talked about what they are using, that Roundup is being used in limited ways. That's become a worldwide topic of conversation and what is safe use of Roundup. And they are trying some new things out to have less use of insecticides out there. So that hopefully will be a long, an ongoing conversation. And otherwise, we will be meeting again on Monday, October fifth at five PM.
Great report. Questions? I do have one question, if you don't mind. One of the most competitive contests down there is the departmental pumpkin painting contest. Is that going to take place or not?
I will let our director answer that question because I'm not sure.
Yes, we are going to do that. We're going to have to call in some outside judges though, because, you know, typically the, those participating at the Halloween car will make that decision. So we'll call in some outside judges, but the departments are going to compete for the best pumpkin carving contest this year.
I'm so glad to hear. Anyone else? Hearing none. Moving on. Personnel.
Yep, that's me. The Personnel Committee met on Tuesday, September fifteenth at nine AM via Zoom. All committee members and staff were present. We started with old business with an update on the wage and compensation study. And we got, we're notified by staff that due to our HR officer, Wynette, has taken another position. She got a bit of a boost to Director of HR for the city of Hanahan, and we're very excited for her opportunity, although sad for our loss certainly. But she was working on that wage and compensation study, and so we've got a little delay there. We do still expect to have everything we need in place for the FY twenty-two budget season. And so the delays, while always frustrating, should not impact the purpose of the study. From there, we moved on to our new business. We got an update on the employee appreciation event that for the past two years we've done in October, due to COVID and everything that's just been happening, the city is recommending that we move that to the spring. And so that, we, we felt like that made sense. And certainly, the Leola Handberry Award, we typically give out during that event. And so we'll be moving that appreciation for one of our outstanding staff members to the, to that time period. We also had a brief discussion on the utilization of the, some of the benefits that the city offers to its employees. And this was just a great reminder of, outside of traditional compensation, there's a lot of things that we provide for our city, family. One of those things is one hundred percent tuition reimbursement, reimbursement. Of course, the healthcare coverage and the employee assistant programs that we offer. And from there, we got an update on the HR and payroll officer. We've received sixty applications to date, and the position is still open. We expect, I don't think we had a specific timeline, but the city administrator was confident that we'd have the position filled soon and that all of the duties of our HR payroll officer have been picked up by general government staff. And we're not, no, no major hiccups as far as I can, as far as we had reported. And the city administrator can correct me and jump in if I've said anything incorrect there. Otherwise, our next meeting is on Tuesday, October the sixth.
Any questions?
My report.
Any questions from council? Mr. Chair, if you don't mind me asking, one of the benefits that we offer is the one hundred percent tuition reimbursement. That's been used pretty well, has it not?
Historically, it's been used pretty well. The, and all, the city administrator can speak much more intelligently about this. We, we typically see a lot of interest, of course, when people hear about it. They do have to complete the course. They do have to, you know, provide documentation. Okay, I've enrolled, I've done this. And so we do see some people that, that start to drop off, but it's, it's been a well-attended, well-used fund throughout, throughout the years. It's been around for a, it certainly predates me. I can't take credit for any of it. I just get to say this is a great benefit that we offer. Desiree, would you like to add some more meat to that?
Yeah. So we, for the past several years, we have seen between eight and ten approximately employees that show interest in participating in the program, and we always request those that are interested to submit to their supervisors and ultimately to the city administrator that request before we start the budgeting process so that we know what we need to include in the, in the first draft. In the past two years, we have had a consistent participation, about three or four employees who sign up and then continue the process. But we have, we've had, you know, it's, it's something that we're very proud of, and we really want to make sure that our employees take advantage of it. Certainly a great, a great benefit that the city provides very generous benefits.
Thank you. Mr. Moy, that was a great report. Thank you very much. Moving on, real property. Vice Chair?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. We, the Real Property Committee met on Wednesday, September ninth at one o'clock. All members and staff were present, and of course, we did it by Zoom. We approved the previous meetings minutes. The citizen comments were read by the city clerk into the record. We moved on to old business, and under old business, we got an update on the Marina Dock permitting and rehabilitation project. And at the time, our administrator reported that the bid package was out for several weeks. I guess numerous questions were submitted by interest party. Proposal due date was extended, and of course, they made the deadline. They got the recommendation to Ways and Means, which we voted, and of course, we voted on it tonight. Still no permit has been received from the Corps of Engineers for the Water Sports Operation Dock. Second item, under old business, we had got an update on the Marina Restaurant Lease Proposal Administrator, our administrator said the lease agreement drafted by the attorneys has been sent back to the family members group. Obviously, it's still going back and forth, and nothing's been finalized yet. We got an update on the proposed ADA compliant beach walkover on Forty-second Avenue. Director Kerr reviewed the reasoning behind selecting Forty-second Avenue as the location for this boardwalk. The area of Forty-second Ave was selected because it was flat, and there was no primary dune, dunes in the location that required an uphill ramp and downhill ramp. There's also a short walk to those with challenges who could park right there on the street and have a relatively short walk to the beach. The original thought was to add a walkway to the right of the existing walkway, but we were worried about our, worried about not cutting down vegetation. So Director Kerr presented three options to the committee, which included pretty much what we had planned with a new, new path adjacent to the existing path, improve the path, that there's a better surface than the Moby mat, and sort of combine the two or look for another alternative location. Administrator, our administrator shared a picture of an ADA, ADA compliant path in Hilton Head, noting while this boardwalk was still flat, we needed routine maintenance to keep it free of sand. Director Kerr also said this path was wide enough for designated heavy vehicle use. Also, our administrator also indicated she'd be reaching out to the administrators of the Green Belt Funds to see if we change in concept, if this affects our use of funds. So we landed on replacing the existing Moby bath with a vehicle with suitable structure, investigating the cost and bringing it back to Real Property Committee for review without damaging the surrounding vegetation with the new boardwalk. Also, further consideration of additional parking spaces in that area will be discussed by the Public Safety Committee. We moved on to new business. We had a discussion of improvements of the other beach access paths, which we know continue to flood. So we would like to evaluate these areas, see what we've done to be, to improve them. So we'll be asking staff and, and our committee just to look further down the path for these, fixing these paths. And then our administrator will prepare a list of, the list of areas needing improvement for the next Real Property Committee meeting. Our next Real Property Committee meeting will be Wednesday, October seventh at one PM. And that ends my report. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Any questions for our real property? Hearing none. Before we go on to the next item of business, I just want to give a shout out to our Recreation Center. They have gone and created a Facebook page. I mean, you know, technology, here we are on Zoom, and Norma Jean and her staff and the committee, I can't say enough great things about y'all. So thank you for, again, taking us into the future. Okay. Moving on. Reports from city officers, boards, and commissions. Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, no meeting. Board of Zoning Appeals, no meeting. Planning Commission, the minutes are attached. Reports from special or joint committees, none. Petitions received, referred, deferred, disposed of, none. Moving on to bills already in possession. A, Amendment of Ordinance twenty twenty oh nine to increase the not exceeding amount of the par amount of the general obligation bonds that may be issued from seven million to eight million. Again, this comes back to our Marina and the incurred cost to make it much longer lasting. Do I hear a motion to increase?
I'll make the motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Yes, sir. Councilmember Ward?
Councilmember Ward, you're muted.
It's my understanding that these are general obligation bonds and not revenue bonds, correct? Which means the taxpayers will be paying for the principal and interest.
Not?
No. Well, it is a, it's, it's a geo bond. It's not a revenue bond. The Marina bond, the debt issue for the Marina is budgeted to be covered by tourism funds and rent revenue. The FY twenty-one budget did include a slight mileage increase to cover the debt service for the proposed phase three drainage. The same answer to the question.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah, this, this, this also includes the drainage outfalls as well, right? That's part of this bond.
That's correct.
Yeah. So that's, 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 that's a big deal as well. Big part of it.
Desiree, if I'm not mistaken, that's also including the multipurpose path improvements too, correct?
Correct. Well, right now, for the drainage project, we only have our estimate provided by our engineers. It's estimated at three point one two five. Just like with the Marina project, we estimated three point two, and we saw bids come in higher than that. But I think that by increasing the not to the amount, not to exceed amount to eight million, it gives us some wiggle room to be somewhat flexible once those phase three drainage bids come back. We are in the process of still designing that project and going through the permitting that you all know takes time. So we don't have a concrete timeline yet on when we're going to be able to go to bid, but original schedule has the city obtaining all permits by the end of this year, early next year. So we're hopeful that we can, once the bids are in place, we have all bids and specifications, and we can go out for, prepare the bid package and go out for bid soon thereafter.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Councilmember Bell?
Yeah, a question and a comment, and Desiree might comment on the former. We had to move from seven million to eight million predominantly for bulkhead cost. You know, we've classified and talked about the bulkhead cost as recoating, resurfacing. Desiree, is there not a fairly large, long-term structural integrity issue on the bulkhead that we're addressing? It, it really isn't. I don't think anyone should be looking at this. Guys are going to put a pretty fancy paint job on a bulkhead. We have a very real problem with rust and erosion on that bulkhead where the structural integrity of it itself is in question. Correct?
That is correct. I mean, ATM has, has indicated that we have no reason to believe that the bulkhead is going to fail anytime soon, but the longer we wait, the worse it gets. And, and part of the reason with adding that component to the Marina Dock project is how convenient it is for them to maneuver once the docks are demolished or they're replaced. So that also contributes to the cost.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, to the same point of both of y'all's comments, when those docks are removed, it's so much easier to go, and this is high-pressure water they're going to be blasting with. If we had put the docks in and came back and then did the blasting, we could be damaging the docks, our brand-new docks. So this is the time for us to do it, when the docks are not in place. Any other comments?
I have a question.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
The question is, does the motion need to specifically, or should the motion specifically include the increase? Just, I mean, I know that it's there, but it's not been said publicly.
I will go back to the motion and make sure that it includes the increase from seven million to eight million.
Thank you.
The second also. Councilmember Popson, did you have a question?
I, I, I just wanted to repeat regarding the bulkhead. As I mentioned, it weighs and means. Part of the problem why we're spending all this money is the lack of maintenance we've done for all these years. So I think it's really important, and it's my understanding that no maintenance has been done on this boardwalk. So it, it, it's time we start doing the maintenance that needed to be, that needs to be done. So, and again, agreeing with why we're down there, you know, making a mess, let's, let's make more of a mess. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great point. Anyone else? Desiree?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. A couple of years ago, the city did do some work to bulkhead. We have some silting issues behind the structure, and that was addressed. Certainly not the, the same level of work that we're proposing now, very different, but there has been some work done to the bulkhead throughout the years. The very minimal, and I guess addressing some apparent issues. Just wanted to clarify that.
Mayor, just a real quick comment. And that incredibly disruptive down there when we did that to the restaurant operation and the Marina operation. It was delayed. It was a mess. So Mayor, to your point, do it all at once. Kevin, to your point, make a bigger mess once.
Okay. Anyone else? Nicole, road call, please.
Were you voting on the amendment first?
We're voting on the amendment first.
Yes.
To clarify, the original motion was never put on the floor. It was only an amendment that was put on the floor. So Julia, do they need to put the original motion on the floor before putting an amendment on the floor? Or am I just splitting hairs? You're on mute also.
I thought there was an original motion.
He just, he read it and said an amendment. He didn't put the original motion on the floor. The original motion was to increase, the only thing I have heard was from Councilmember Bell to increase the amount from seven to eight million.
That, that is the amendment.
Yeah. And that is how it was. Yeah, and that is how it was advised by our bond council that it be included on the agenda and voted on. So we need to amend it to increase the amount and then vote on the ordinance after amended.
I see. Okay, let me make sure I understood what was going on. Okay.
Before you get started, I had that same exact question for Desiree today. I said, this seems backwards to be doing it this way. But yeah, I had the same question.
Okay, okay, thank you. Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Nay.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Motion passed to seven to one.
Thank you very much. Now to keep it really confusing for us. Going back to ordinance 2020-09, a general obligation bond for the construction of face free drainage and Marina Dock and Bulkhead Project. Ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $7 million aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds for City Isle Palms, South Carolina. To provide for the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds. Anticipation note and anticipation of the issuance of said bonds. That's weird wording, but. Describe the purposes to which the proceeds of such borrowing shall be applied to provide for the payment thereof and other matters related thereto.
Wow.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve as amended, and I believe that's the correct way to do this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Question.
Councilmember Ward.
Explain, I'd like to get clarification from the city attorney what that Councilmember Bell just said.
You're voting on the original motion with the increase to eight million added, correct? And this is because bond counsel asked for it to be drafted this way, the motion?
Okay.
Okay.
So.
This is actually second reading of this particular ordinance, right?
Correct. We had first reading last week and since then, the consideration for the amendment to increase the amount was considered. That's why just out of, you know, for transparency and clarity, we included it as a separate item on the agenda so that the public knew that council was considering increasing the not to exceed amount from seven to eight.
So in all intents and purposes, if you vote to approve this, you're voting for the amendment also.
Yeah, you're voting on a bond not to exceed eight million and the.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Nicole.
Councilmember Ward?
Nay.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Motion passed to seven to one.
Thank you very much. Moving on, item C, Emergency Ordinance 2020-12. Emergency ordinance declaring state of emergency requiring the use of face coverings, limited parking on the island, live entertainment after 10:00 P. M. and occupancy in bars and restaurants to 50% and other measures to protect the life and safety of the citizens of Isle Palms. Do I hear a motion? And by the way, our existing one expires on October the 14th.
Motion to approve.
Yeah. Do we need to put a date on it, the mayor?
We need a timeframe too.
You all vote to extend the emergence, the same provisions that are currently included in Emergency Ordinance 2020-12. Unless you if you you can put it an earlier date, but then it would automatically expire on.
I couldn't hear Desiree. What'd she say?
I'm sorry. If you all vote to extend the emergency provisions included in Emergency Ordinance 2020-12, which is which is included in the agenda and the package, they would expire automatically after 60 days, but you all can have a different timeframe earlier than that.
So the way it reads now, would we be extending it 60 days from October 13th, to be clear?
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a motion and a second?
I have.
I have motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Amendment.
Councilmember Ward, I'm sorry, say again?
I would like to propose an amendment.
Okay, do it.
Change live entertainment from 10:00 P. M. to 11:00 P. M. as per state law.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Nicole, I saw Rusty and Philip raised their hands, so I'll move came first.
The only person I heard was Councilmember Popsen, so.
Pick one.
I'm gonna take him.
Okay, okay, discussion. Okay, on the amendment. Nicole?
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy? Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you. Back to the original Emergency Ordinance extension. Yes, sir. Councilmember Ward.
Excuse me, sir. Thank you for your time. But this, someone asked me about the occupancy in bars and restaurants changing from 50 to 75%. That's a state rule, isn't it not? That 50%. So there's nothing we can do about that?
Yeah, that's included in one of the governor's emergency.
Very good. That's what I thought. I just want to be able to tell them that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none. Nicole?
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
This is a voting. We're voting as amended, just so everybody's clear, correct?
That's correct.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Moving on, number eight.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, just have a question. Section number three of the Emergency Ordinance talks about the authorization of local businesses to have an exception to the city's plastic ban ordinance. In that, in the version that was approved in August, on August, it included that a grace period to use all remaining stock until November 1st. But then after October 31st, the plastic ban exemption would be eliminated. Are you all you all are that stays in place? You're not extending the exception of the plastic ban for 60 more days, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
But we also had sort of a provision in there also, correct me if I'm wrong, that if the if any business needed to extend that, they could actually approach the city and ask for an extension of that if they need to, if they had an issue. Is that correct?
For hardship.
Hardship, hardship extension.
That is included in the regular ban to plastics, not included in the emergency ordinance. But what the emergency ordinance says is that the the exception to the plastic ban is until October 31st with a grace period to use all remaining stock until November.
Okay. All right.
Yes, they there is a process in the code where they can apply for an exemption to the city due to hardship.
That's that's where I was going with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Desiree, for the clarification. Okay, moving on. Number eight, introduction of new bills, resolutions, flacramations. Consideration of reimbursement resolution to express the intention of the city to cause the city to be reimbursed with the proceeds of tax exempt obligations and other matters related thereto. Basically, what we're talking about is we're going for an eight million dollar bond issue, but we've got some projects that are going to be working in advance and they're going to need money. So this is a something to give them permission to give money in advance if we are receiving that money. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Comment.
Councilmember Ward.
Mayor, Carol, I think you explained it correctly. It's just as, if you will, it's a safety net in case we have some soft costs to hit a town before we get the proceeds from the bond.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell, I think you raised your hand?
No.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Nicole?
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Moving on, item number nine, miscellaneous business. Discussion. Discussion and consideration regarding future use of the water sports dock at the Isle Palms Marina to be used as a commercial dock with 10 parking places or as a public dock with green space and residential parking spaces. Before I go on, I'd just like to add a couple little clarifications. In April of last year, city council voted to not automatically renew two existing leases at the Marina, the Title Wave Water Sports and Morgan Creek Grill that were expiring this year. Council is in the process determining the best use for that area, whether to continue to lease for a commercial operation or turn into a public dock with green space with free resident parking spaces. If council decides that it wants that dock and parking places to be leased for a private commercial operation, then the city would have to pursue the same competitive bid request for proposals that we did for the restaurant site. The city of Isle Palms has a very valuable asset. The city owned Marina and the council intends to maximize its potential for the benefit of all members of our community. This is a unique opportunity for the city to do something special at the Marina, which will stand as this council's legacy for years to come. Do I hear a motion to go one of two ways? A commercial dock with 10 parking places or as a public dock with green space and residential parking spaces?
Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion that we use the space as a public green space parking dock.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Let's do Councilmember Popsen and then we'll come back to Councilmember Moy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm unfortunately going to repeat myself. Why I support a residence dock, I just don't think this dock is the best solution. We're in a non-harvest dehack area, so you can't fish. You're you got the 41 outfall right there, so who's going to want to swim? And plus, with all the boat traffic going by. Again, with the paddle boards and the kayaks, with all the boat traffic going by, is it really a safe place to 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 put these things in the water right there? And then just keep in mind off-season, the the no-egg buoys are pulled up, so now everybody's coming through there full speed. So I just don't know that this is the safest place. So we're talking about taking an income-producing dock and turning it into a cost-producing dock with added liability. I would just like to ask other council members to consider, is there is there a way of finding another location for this possible public dock, you know, including trying to work out an exchange, deal with the exchange club? Hamlin Creek would be so much safer. And lastly, I'm sure we can find a way to find a safe location for the residence dock while trying to help a longtime business who has served our island residents well or at least extend a lifeline to an RFP process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Popsen. Councilmember Moy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll probably echo a few of my comments from last week as well. But the Marina is a special place for the island and it's one of few assets that we own and it's the only access point that we as a city own to the water. This is a small parcel of that land that is frankly the only parcel that we'll have control of until 2045. And if if we want our residents to have a place where they can go to the Marina without having to buy something, this is this is the only place that that we can do that at. And so, you know, for me, my position, I've been pretty clear about why I believe this is the case and the conversations I've had with residents. And I believe in my heart of hearts that creating a public green space at the Marina is the best thing that we can do as a city. And so that's that's why I'm supporting it. And I I believe that the mayor said it right, that this is a legacy that future generations will look back on and greatly appreciate the decision that we made tonight if we do choose to support this, to put in a public green space for our kids and grandkids to enjoy.
Thank you. Councilmember Moy, Councilmember Streetman? You're on mute, Rusty.
I'm sorry. I'm playing a little bit of a home movie here as well, but I mean, I've lived here since 1984 and I was here when we had the Marina issue come up in 1998, 1999. And and I voted. I ended up voting for the city to purchase the property. And I did it, you know, basically sort of, you know, not in favor of a city government getting involved in private industry, but I didn't like the idea of seeing it being so privatized down there and having a lot of condos that we had no access at all. Now, I know we have the dock down there, but to Councilman Moy's comment, we have not had any real public access down there. And this is our opportunity now that this lease that had been decided to not be renewed over a year ago is not going to be extended. It's an opportunity to take that part of the space right there and to put some public green space in there. I don't know what kind of activities will happen there in regards to swimming, crabbing, that sort of thing, but it's going to be a green space in an area that people could go along with their kids, their grandkids themselves and reflect a little bit. And I think a nice a nice area to to be able to leave as part of our legacy for Marina that we bought many, many years ago. The other part of this is that last year, when I began campaigning to run late in the year, along with a few others that are on council now, I made a commitment at that point publicly that I was in favor of, you know, some green space and public access in that area down there. Also made the public comments too, that I was hoping that any commercial enterprise we had down there could find a way to stay in some in some form or manner. But that doesn't seem to be working out at all. So I just don't think that we have the space there to do both. I think it has to be one or the other to live up to what I consider my campaign commitment, which was to provide some public space or see that we had public space for the citizens that voted for me. That's where I stand. And and I think that's what we owe the citizens and residents of Isle Palms. Over the last couple of years, I think we've earned more and more from many people that did like to see some public area down there that could be beautified and be used by the residents. So I'm going to be voting in support of this as well. Thanks.
Any other council members, please? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. We've had a lot of conversation about this in the community, but we actually have not fully discussed this issue, I don't believe, by council in terms of seriously talking about what is possible to use that dock for. We've had, there's been concerns brought up but not discussed as Councilmember Popsen suggested that members of the community have come to us and suggested this would be a good place for a launch for kayaking and paddle sports. I'm I'm not clear on that, though. I I think that I feel like we're taking a vote prematurely before we fully have a discussion about what is really possible there, about concerns about potential liability of using that as a kayak paddle sports launch. Although I fully embrace the idea of promoting those activities. Again, I don't know that that is the right spot for it, our rec. Our, our rec center, uh, director who has experience with water sports safety, has brought up concerns. I just feel like it's premature to lock in without, while, while clearly the direction of this council is to look seriously how we can use that for green space, I would much prefer that we put this in the form of exploration of these important topics. Um, also whether fishing's viable on that spot, what we can do with storage and launch for kayaks and paddle boards. I, I would prefer to modify the motion. And if Nicole could read that back to me so that we are looking at this as exploring these, the potential for green space without, um, put, committing fully to something that we can't go back on.
Nicole, you're on.
Councilmember Moy's motion was to use the space at the marina as public green space park and dock.
If I could modify, uh, offer an amendment to modify that motion, to have it be that we explore, community, add the word explore, use.
That is a motion, Susan?
Yes.
Explore the use of the space as public green space park and dock.
Yes, so that we can have that full conversation that we really haven't had up to this point.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Hearing no second. Susan, I don't think that's gonna go forward.
Thank you.
If I don't mind, and just for Councilmember Popsen's comments, if I'm not mistaken, there are kayak rentals and paddleboard rentals down at the marina now. And, you know, it is a no-wake zone at this time of the year. I, I don't paddleboard in the wintertime myself when the big boats are going by, but it is being used by kayaks and paddleboards at, at this period of time. But that's just an observation from my side, not trying to be confrontational or just giving you my, what's going on down there now. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to address the question about liability. We have that question as well that was vetted back in 2017 when the city, um, presented a, the referendum plan, which all of the iterations included a public dock in that space. We have since then reached out to our insurance company and confirmed with it, it's through the municipal association of South Carolina, and they have confirmed that the city's liability insurance would cover the use of that dock, current, with our current coverage. So I just wanted to clarify that, knowing that this was gonna be on the agenda, we have confirmed that with our insurance company.
Councilmembers, Councilmember Ward, and then back to Smith.
So if this, uh, motion, um, goes to the green space tonight and Title Wave is, leases up September 30th, should do is the city move in October 1st, and what do we do about security? Do we put up a gate? Will there be a lock on it? Will there be somebody there to monitor the activities on the dock? Uh, will there be lighting at night? Will the facility be secure at night from people that might be up to no good? And if that, if so, when is all this gonna take place?
Councilmember Pounds, is that, see your hand go up?
It is. I'd, I'd like to call for the vote, Mayor.
Thank, thank you, sir.
Hold on, all the question, I need somebody else to second that if we're gonna move forward.
And we have a, a motion and a second.
No other discussion about it can go on?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Discussion on the amendment.
Yeah, discussion, no, there's no amendment. It's, he called the question because the motion to amend failed. So this is, you're voting on the actual motion, the actual motion to use the space as a green space park and dock. No further discussion can go on.
Thank you very much.
Do we not have to vote on the call for the question first?
Yes, sir, you're correct. I'm sorry. Voting on call for the question. Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Nay.
Councilmember Ward?
Nay.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
The motion passes five to two, call the question. So they, we're now voting on the.
Original?
Original motion of using the space at the marina as public green space park and dock. Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Nay.
Councilmember Popsen?
Nay.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Motion passes five to two.
Thank you very much. No executive session is needed. Next meeting is at 6:00 PM Tuesday, October 27th. Mr. Buchanan is not here tonight. Do I hear a?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.